It's now 6:37 the time and today is Monday, February 19th, 2024. I will now call this City Council regular meeting to order. I do certify that we have a quorum of council. Mayor Alakad is out of town and I, as your Mayor Pro Tem, will be presiding over the meeting in his absence. We will now have the pledge of allegiance and that will be by the Missouri City Sugarland, Jack and Jill Group Guys and Dolls. So if we can welcome them.
I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Y'all, let's give this young group a round of applause. Hold on, wait, wait, wait. We would like to take a picture with you all, so if you all will stay right there, we're gonna come down and take a picture with you. We will have a special presentation by Chief Harris. Is Chief Harris here? You wanna come on up?
Good evening, Mayor Council.
Good evening.
Well, I appreciate you letting me be here again today.
Absolutely.
Here to first publicly introduce Assistant Chief Hurd, who is newly appointed police chief. I think you can see by the outpouring of support here that we clearly made the right choice. So if you'll allow me to read something real quick.
Applause.
Applause, okay. Chief Hurd, come on up. He's very shy. So Chief Hurd and I, I think we make a fantastic team. We're gonna do great things for this department. We compliment each other in so many ways. Like I said, he's shy and I'm not. He's not outspoken, I am totally the opposite. So I wanna read something real quick about Assistant Chief Hurd. Assistant Chief Hurd is a Missouri City native and graduate of Thurgood Marshall High School. He is widely recognized for his community outreach and commitment to public service. Assistant Chief Hurd holds a bachelor's degree in business administration and has enhanced his professional development through prestigious executive leadership training such as Northwestern University Leadership Command College and the National Forum for Black Public Administrators Executive Leadership Institute. He has ascended through the ranks and has a well-rounded experience, which is highlighted by his time in community outreach, investigations, patrol, and SWAT. Please welcome Assistant Chief Hurd.
Boss lady said I got one minute. First and foremost, I just wanna thank God for all my past successes and my future successes. He leads me in my life at all times, that's why I must recognize that. I definitely wanna recognize my wife for being a great support. I got my parents back there, they're here to support. Thank you, City Council, City Management, for your leadership and great job. I'm really excited about all of the things I know we will do here in Missouri City. Chief Harris, thank you so much. I really appreciate this opportunity. He's a great leader. Like he said, we complement each other very well and I'm excited every day to come to work 'cause I learn a lot from him, just about every day. And hey, I'm just ready to serve. Let's get to it.
So your wife is ba-- your wife, kids, they wanna come on up? Let's get a group picture. These are the people that support him every day. And Council, why don't y'all come down? Let's get a group picture. Did he what?
His parents.
Oh, your parents here? Oh, yeah, come on, Mom, Dad, come on. Because of them.
Hey, she's speeding, let her go.
I wanna acknowledge all of the Missouri City Police Department that came out to support their brother. Also, Chief Gordon from the DA's office and State Rep Ron Reynolds is also here. All right, we are going to move on. And I need it kinda quiet for the next thing I'm gonna do, so. So as we move on, I would like to start our City Council meeting.
We can close those doors.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so as we move on, I do wanna start our meeting with-- happy occasion. All right, I do wanna start our meeting with a moment of silence. Recently, one of our former City Council members of Missouri City, also TERs number one board and Arts and Culture Commission members, passed away. All of the City Council members, every last one of us attended her memorial service. And so I want to start with a moment of silence in honor of Ms. Eunice Ryder, who served our city tirelessly until the very end. So if we'll bow our heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Also, in that same vein, I also want to observe a moment of silence for Mr. Joseph Aponti. He was a first responder in the Fleet Division of Public Works for the City of Sugarland. He recently passed away during the line of duty and we are saddened for the loss of any life, but especially those lost during the service to the communities we serve. So if we can bow our heads to honor the life of Joseph Aponti. Thank you very much. All right, we will move on to public comments. Madam Secretary, did you receive any public comments?
No, Madam, Mayor Pro Tem, I did not.
What? All right, well, we're gonna move on. We're gonna move on to number six, staff reports.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Council. I, at this time, would like to provide an overview of each of the consent items before you tonight and address any questions that you may have regarding those items. Starting with item B, this would enable the purchase of a mobile column lift jack equipment at cost not to exceed $80,244. This equipment will enable us to be able to lift fire trucks, which we currently do not have that capacity. Item C authorizes the negotiation of a contract not to exceed $425,000 with Blue Ox Construction to do the second phase of repair at the City Hall Entrance Plaza. The city opted to use Blue Ox for Phase Two of the City Hall Entrance Plaza because they completed Phase One, which was awarded in September 2022. Staff felt it would be best to have the same contractor complete both phases to eliminate potential warranty issues between phases and/or contractors. And additionally, Blue Ox Construction Incorporated is a certified historically underutilized business and an SVE, small business enterprise. Item D allows for the receipt and approval of the fiscal year 23 annual reports for the tax increment, reinvestment zones 1, 2, and 3. This is an annual state requirement that must be completed by the end of February. Item E is seeking approval to grant a license to the HOA representing the Sienna Residence for the maintenance of improvements on public property. Item F, this action authorizes parkland dedication proposal for Metaview Estates subdivision. Item G, this is the second and final reading to amend Plan Development Number 85 to remove about seven acres and add them to Planning Development Number 83 for outdoor storage, covered manufacturing area, and warehouse space. This has to do with the Milis Construction Group expanding their service area. Item H, second and final reading for-- to an ordinance to amend the rules and restrictions for Plan Development Number 17. The regulations to be amended include address height and area, garage landscaping, and fencing. This is the Denani property, which allows them to move forward through construction. Item I, second and final reading to amend Chapter 14 regulations adopting the 2021 edition of the International Codes and the 2023 edition of the National Electric Codes. Item J, second and final reading to amend Chapter 38 Fire Prevention and Protection adopting the 2021 edition of the 2021 International Fire Codes. The effective date for all of the second and final readings is May 1st. All of the second and final readings passed unanimously by council previously. Now I have a couple of announcements that I'd like to share. DPW will be hosting the Southeast Chapter of the American Public Works Association this Wednesday for their monthly membership meeting at our Regional Surface Water Treatment Plant. Congratulations to DPW team for bringing this prestigious meeting to Missouri City. The next item I'd like to announce, hopefully this doesn't apply to anyone in this room, but we have started our warrant roundup period. This period will continue until March 14th. All the notices have been posted on all of our social media platforms and individuals are strongly encouraged to contact our municipal courts to determine if they're eligible for case resolution incentives to get those warrants addressed. The last thing I'd like to note is, based on Livability Magazine article, they name Missouri City as one of the top four suburbs in the Houston area. So other than that, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
I don't see it in the queue.
Nope.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to pull item two-- I mean, excuse me, item 7C for conversation.
Okay, we need a--
And I'll make a motion to approve all except item 7C.
So you had a motion from, I thought it was--
Councilmember Emery.
And so if Councilmember Emery would be willing to withdraw that motion.
Will you be willing to withdraw that motion, Councilmember Emery?
Yes, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. So I see Councilmember Boni in the queue. What is your-- what is your pleasure, Councilmember Boni?
I'd like to approve the consent agenda and pull item 7C.
All right, so the motion was made by Councilmember Boni to approve the consent agenda except item C. Do I have a second? I see Councilmember Brown Marshall in the queue. Let's take the vote.
The motion carries unanimously to accept the consent agenda items A through J, except item C.
Okay. All right, so we will now take up item 7C.
My simple question, City Manager, is how many phases are the City Hall Entrance Plaza-- is it just two phases or-- so this will be it, everything that we do from this point? I mean, this will conclude everything that needed to be done for our City Hall?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have?
All right. Recognizing Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Okay, thank you so much. City Manager, you made reference that we chose this vendor because they did Phase One and that portion was completed in 2022. How long is the warranty? Are we still within warranty from Phase One?
We are still in warranty from Phase One.
Okay, that sounds good. And I have one last question. Y'all gonna remove those papers that tear up my high heels?
That is what this project-- this project addresses that.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Okay, no one else in the queue? We're gonna move on to item eight, which is authorizations.
You're missing a motion to adopt 7C.
Oh. All right, so do we have a motion to adopt-- we do have a motion to adopt 7C by Councilmember Riley, seconded by Councilmember Marulis. Let's take our vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right, moving on to authorizations. Consideration and possible action to authorize the City Manager to negotiate and execute a contract with Flock Safety, sole source vendor to renew and add 25 additional cameras for a five-year term not to exceed $802,300. Chief Brandon Harris.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem.
Good evening. All right. Councilmember Boni.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. My question is, so you say you're using these from the drug seizure dollars or--
We're gonna purchase 25 cameras from drug seizure.
And I just, it would be helpful to kinda know, 'cause I know we don't really use it a lot, but what the balance of that is because-- no, I know you don't now. I'm just saying, for the future, it would be helpful to kinda know what we have in there because I know it's important. Are you sure that you don't need more than 25? I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, seeing that right now-- But I guess the question is, do we need more than 25 block cameras right now? Okay, where is the gaps?
We wanna--
Sorry, I striked my question.
You trying to get the gavel. All right. Is that it, Councilmember Boni? That's enough. All right, seeing no one else in the queue, there's-- recognizing Councilmember Emery.
No, I think it was great that you brought up the fact that this is used for police use only and we protect all of the rights that our citizens have. And so they can be assured that it's only used for police use and not for any other purpose. So they can rest assured that these aren't red light runner cameras or anything else that might be subject to question. So thanks again.
Recognizing City Manager Jones.
Yes, I just wanted to respond to the question about the approximate balance in the Caesar funds. It's about 1.2 million.
Got some money to spend, Brandon.
All right. All right, motion by Councilmember Brown Marshall, seconded by Councilmember Riley. We are ready for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Chief Harris. We'll move on to resolutions.
9A, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Missouri City, Texas, identifying certain officials with authority to open and maintain an account or accounts with Wells Fargo Bank National Association, providing for repeal and containing other provisions relating to the subject.
All right. I see a motion by Councilmember Emery, a second by Councilmember Marulis. We are ready for the vote.
The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Moving on to City Council announcements. I'm gonna change things up a little bit today. All right. We're gonna start with you, Councilmember Emery. Councilmember of District D.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I had the great pleasure and distinction, my wife and I, of attending the event that we had at the Black History Month Gala. It was-- first of all, it was well-attended and I was blown away by the nine-year-- I think she was nine years old-- the length of the presentation that she made with no prompts and she didn't miss a beat. And I think it just shows that we've got some great young people coming up behind us that is gonna make our future in Missouri City strong and we can look forward to that. So I was really blown away by that presentation. And that is the extent of my comments.
All right. We're gonna throw it over to you, Councilmember Boni.
All right.
You know speaker.
Oh, wow, I appreciate it. I hope everybody had a wonderful Valentine's Day. I thoroughly enjoyed, too, attending the Black History Gala that we had where Jerry, former Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem, Jerry Wyatt, was honored as being the first African American since Reconstruction to be elected in Missouri City and the first ever African American City Council member in Missouri City. Great to see staff and my colleagues there as well. We also had a wonderful coffee with leadership. Great to see those getting kicked back off. I enjoyed being there. As Mayor Pro Tem Clauser mentioned, we all attended the memorial services of Eunice Ryder, who I had the pleasure of serving with on the CDAC Committee. And one thing I will share about her is she was a very, very detailed-oriented person and encouraged me to come prepared to the meetings by doing my research and she knew how to move a meeting forward. She knew Robert's rules of order like the back of her hand and so she definitely is and was an inspiration, including jumping out of a perfectly good airplane at the age of 83, I wanna say, years of age. When I saw that come across my newsfeed, I was like, wow, she beat me to it. So I plan to do that as well. Attended the dedication ceremony of Fort Ben Parkway Sienna Ranch Extension. We had a wonderful two-day retreat, council retreat, where we collaboratively worked together to try to put forth some path-forward goals and objectives that we wanna see to help move Missouri City forward and I believe we did just that. Also, kudos to the Parks and Recreation Department for being awarded a $1 million grant from HGAC, which will help go towards converting the 3.2-mile Hunter's Glen Jogging Trail from decomposed granite to concrete, evaluate current bridge structures and add other amenities like benches and other words. So kudos to all of you all in Parks and Rec. And last but not least, a great job, Mayor Pro Tem Clauser, on filling in the gap and helping move us forward with this agenda.
Thank you. All right, throwing it over to Councilmember--
District C, the place to be.
Oh, no, I was just trying to figure it out. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Keep that thing away. Thank you, staff, for putting together a great retreat. I thank those that witnessed what happened Saturday late. We grew closer as a team. And how exciting is it to be number four? And that shows how hard you guys are working, how well we work together. Black history, I have two things. First of all, I enjoy the gala as well. AI versus BI, I thought that was a great theme. Jeff, you did an outstanding job. Well-deserved, Councilmember Wyatt. I served with him and he, too, was prepared. He would not accept a laptop. He called his binder laptop, which had pages and pages of content highlighted. He enjoys his laughing. But congratulations to Jerry. I, too, attended, all of us attended, Councilmember Ryder's memorial and it was great to see her family, but I just commended her for her hard work. So may her memory be eternal. So the second thing about black history, though, is I always share-- So, the second thing about Black History, though, is I always share this with my team, something cool. So, George Franklin Grant was the first American professor at Harvard. He was also a Boston dentist, and he invented the wooden golf tee, Floyd. So, I share this with my team, thought it would be a great thing to share with the community. Finally, great job tonight, and go vote tomorrow.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Brown Marshall.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem. I really appreciate it. Big congratulations goes out to Assistant Chief Hurd. It's just refreshing to see that our police department is definitely on the upswing. I mean, you guys are getting pretty close to being fully, fully staffed, really, really close, and so I'm excited to have both Hurd and, of course, Chief Harris working together as a team. Our City Council Retreat was, it was just epic. It was phenomenal. The retreat gave me a new sense of hope and rejuvenation as we discuss innovative and thought-provoking ideas and challenges and legislative changes and growth. I was most proud of how our moderator, Randy, was able to pivot and captivate our desires. His grip on the reality by intertwining both City Council and City Staff's contributions towards the city's success was most appreciated by me as well. So, whatever juju, we use that word quite a bit during the retreat, whatever magic he has that he was able to pull us all together, it was just absolutely phenomenal. Black History Month right here in Missouri City has been phenomenal. I mean, we have had so many events. Just a reminder, the Shades of Brilliance event, where we recognize young authors, it has been rescheduled to February the 23rd. So, make sure you put that on your calendars. The Third Annual Freedom Walk is this coming Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. It is a huge treat just to get out there near Freedom Tree Park and to do a walk together as one, one accord, if you will, and in unison. So, make sure we're there. I want to thank the city for putting on these events along with our partners, the Edison Arts Foundation, HEB, and many others. But most importantly, I want to thank the Public Works Department, the Parks Department, and of course, Communications. You guys really step up and lead us during this time. We said it last month, we're one of the fewer cities that recognizes this all month long, so it's really and truly an all-hands-on-deck situation. Councilmember Eunice Ryder, man, she will be truly, truly missed, but I rest assured she left a mentoring legacy that will not be forgotten ever. Mayor Protem, good job.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Riley.
Save the best for last. I'm the last. So, you're right, carry on. Well, last of the districts. Well, first of all, let me say, you did an outstanding job tonight, and the fact that we're getting out of here before Robin Ellicott time, you can stand over there anytime you want. So, great job. Thank you, Mayor Protem Klauzer. I, too, had the pleasure and humbling opportunity to attend Eunice Ryder, you know, memorial service. It was very personal to me. I never served with her, but she was my personal council member in District A. I knew her when I was a young, young adult, who had bought my first home in District A after growing up in District A. So, she was my council member for 20 years until she passed the reins, and so just knowing her personally and watching her and seeing how she served helped me to learn a lot for the one day that I never thought I would be sitting in her seat, but it was definitely big shoes to fill. So, you know, I'm very grateful to have been there and so grateful that all of our members of council were present together. It was a beautiful presence. I also attended the former mayor, Yolanda Ford's, her mother's passing her memorial service as well, which they were just a couple of days apart. The coffee with leadership, it was so refreshing to be back with everybody, the team and the council members, drinking free coffee that we didn't have to pay for. So, thank everybody for coming out, and I also want to say thank you to all of the team, all the district, district, all the directors and assistant city managers, city manager, secretary, and attorney for putting together a great retreat, and just being able to have some camaraderie, have some laughs and some jokes. That was, that was really fun, and we walked away with some tangible outcomes that we were gonna be able to do. I also had the honor of going to Quell Green West HOA, as well as Font Meadow HOA as well, and grateful to Walter Gantz, our neighborhood services, for being on that call, and then, of course, Assistant City Manager Jason Mangum and Shashi for helping me work through some things with Quell Green West. Hopefully, everybody had a great and happy Valentine's Day, because I know I did. We had a great Black History Gala, which was a lot of fun to catch the tail end of it. And then, lastly, I want to say congratulations to Snow Dreams, another wonderful minority-owned business that sells all carnival food, Frito pies and nachos and chicken wings and great snow cones and candy, right there, 1731 Texas Parkway. So, please go out there and support our businesses right here in Missouri City. And that concludes my message.
Yes.
Now, take it away. Well, Councilmember Boni decided he wanted to say something. You got 20 seconds.
Well, I had 45 still left, you know, but no, I just wanted to, I just was in honor...
Do you know how y'all do me when the mayor's away?
No, in honor of Black History Month.
All folks gonna be out of here.
In honor of Black History Month, I just wanted to say this upcoming Friday, the first black sheriff in the United States is right out here in Fort Ben County, and his name is Sheriff, well, was Sheriff Walter Moses Burton. He also was the first African-American tax assessor in Fort Ben County. He was also the first black state senator in the state of Texas, and he's right out of Fort Ben County, so he's buried at Morton Cemetery in Richmond, and they'll have a wreath land ceremony where they're gonna be honoring him, as well as all of the black sheriffs across the United States, at nine o'clock a.m. on this Friday.
All right. Where?
Morton Cemetery in Richmond, Texas.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilmember Boni. So, I, as well, attended Councilmember, former Councilmember Eunice Ryder's funeral. It was actually a memorial service, and we had an opportunity to present her family with a certificate and just hug on them and love on them and share our memories with her children, and they were so appreciative of that. Also, the coffee with leadership at our new city police department, NX, and I didn't realize so many people could fit in that building, but it was, there was a lot of great energy, and so I think we just really felt the love, and people are happy that it's back. But quarterly, right?
Yes.
Quarterly, yes, quarterly. So, so thank you.
I'm sorry, you just said quarterly. It really was supposed to be biannually.
Okay, we'll talk about that later. So, we had, we had a great one. I attended the Fort Ben County Sienna Tollway Extension Project, so thank you to Fort Ben County Judge George, Judge George, and Commissioner, the commissioners that had took part in that. The two-day retreat, wow. I think those two days, although they were long, they were an effective use of our time, and we really, really came out of that with a great understanding. And so, I want to say thank you to our directors. If you are a director and you were with us Friday night and all day Saturday, if you will please stand up. If you weathered the storm with us at the retreat, please stand up. Our appointees didn't stand up, but we want to say, we want to say, what did you say?
We're not the directors.
Well, the direct, well, you're, okay. Well, everybody that was there. So, we want to sincerely say thank you so much for your attentiveness, for your participation, and for the work that you do each and every day to keep this city moving. I don't think we tell you all enough how much we appreciate you, and especially to our appointees for all the work that you do. It takes a lot of work to put something like that together behind the scenes, and all the reports are detailed, and so for you all to present those, we appreciate you. I want to throw a special nod to Jarrell. Jarrell has been, he worked, he's our deputy city secretary, and I tell you, I don't know how you do it some days. I was walking down the hall, and I said, I need a stapler. I didn't even know Jarrell was in earshot, but here comes Jarrell out of the dark with a stapler. And that just goes to show you how attentive he is to the city council. So, I just wanted to publicly say thank you for all that you do. I attended the Snow Dreams ribbon cutting along with Councilmember Riley and Councilmember Danny Nguyen, who's former council member, Danny Nguyen. He bought everybody's snow cones, and so we appreciate that. And I had the pleasure and honor of presenting a certificate to Ms. Jean, who was a longtime volunteer at the farmer's market this Saturday. She put in over 400 hours at the farmer's market, and she is moving to Ohio with her family. And so, I just wanted to publicly say thank her, to thank her and for her years of service with the market, and thank Ms. Thomasine Johnson for running that market. And I see one of the volunteers out in the office, out in the, out in the chamber who volunteers each week. So, so, yeah, so, and then the gala. The gala was amazing. We had a great time. We danced the night away, but Jerry Wyatt is a force to be reckoned with, and his speech, he didn't even have it written down. It was just off the cuff, and so we appreciate Jerry Wyatt's years of service. So, that's the only time I can go over because I have control. And nobody's gonna stop me. So, with that...
Boys like this.
So, with that, it's the only time I'm ever gonna be able to go over. But how many times do y'all get out at 7:19? So, there is, with no further business, we do not have an executive agenda item. So, Councilmember Sonia Brown Marshall has her purse on the desk. There is no executive agenda. I now adjourn the meeting at 7:19.